We looked at flipping that and having Lloyd Avenue stop control with Geo Carlson preflow. And then the third option was if we just make it a four-way stop, have all legs stopped. We are proposing pedestrian improvements. Is that currently on the plans we show the calls for? Higher to provide sidewalk along the north side of Geo Carlson Boulevard at some point in the future. So we would put the crossing on that side. But we went through the analysis and looked at how those intersections, how those various options would operate at the intersection. You know, we don't want to have traffic backing up. We don't have issue with respect to operation. So as a result of those analysis, the most efficient or the most, the best operating option would be to stop both legs of Geo Carlson Boulevard. That was if you look at the way the analysis came out. The number one, the best working option was to stop Geo Carlson. We'd have to continue. However, the four-way stop option wasn't too far behind in terms of operation. Didn't show significant queuing. Showed pretty good levels, decent levels of service. But in consultation with Mr. Snyder, again, I won't speak for me. He's right here. But I think the decision was made that we would move forward with the option of showing on the plan, stopping Geo Carlson on both sides. Monitor that, see how that operates. Once Geo Carlson Boulevard extension is in, if people learn the traffic patterns. And then if needed, look at the potential to install stop signs on Lloyd Avenue as well, because it's easier to add stop signs than it is to remove stop signs. We don't want to go ahead and put a four-way stop in and find out that it's not the most efficient way that traffic is backing up on Lloyd Avenue. And then you take the stop signs out and people have expectation that there's a stop sign. So rather start with the two stop signs as shown. And if through observations or discussions, once the road is open and operating at the additional sun and stop signs on Lloyd Avenue to be necessary, those will be installed as well.
Yeah. And as far as how the planning commission lands on both those comments, we came up with these conditions. Six months after the medical center building is occupied or some other time acceptable to the board, applicants shall conduct a post-development traffic study of the intersections that were included in the applicant's traffic impact study, including the site access driveways to determine the actual trip generation rates for the site and to identify actual volume distribution throughout the study area. The results of the study will be reviewed with PENDO to determine if additional mitigation is required. Applicants shall implement the mitigation measures recommended by the township. With respect to the stop sign intersection, applicants shall install a two-way stop control with stop signs on the Geo Carlson Boulevard approach at the intersection of Lloyd Geo Carlson Boulevard. The operation of the intersection shall be analyzed by applicant as part of the post-development traffic study that applicant is required to perform. However, at any point after the building is open, if directed by the township, applicants shall convert the intersection to an always stop control. We landed on that with the recommendation of Mike because he said it could be day one, traffic, we're going out there, rain's watching it, your, you know, public works director is watching it and you realize it's not with the two ways. We're going to put the four-way in at any point in time. You don't, it's a, it's a putting stop sign, putting a pink sign, right? There's no design changes to the road to do that. So that's where the planning person landed on those two.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I remember reading through the documentation from township engineers, but my understanding from that, reading that, the most efficient at that intersection would be a roundabout.
I did say that. It did say it. It did say that.
No, I don't.
So I can say it instead they should devalue it.
They should, so it didn't say anything about efficiency because that option isn't analyzed. It wasn't anything about the efficiency of a roundabout. What was requested of us, which we have complied with, was the thought that when the Route 30 bypass project comes through, there may be an opportunity at that time, depending on how traffic flow and how things are moving and how people are reacting to this option for this, this, this geometry is being proposed, that PENDO may, once you put a roundabout in the Geo Carlson Boulevard and Lloyd Avenue, if they desire Lloyd Avenue remain. And I think it's a great idea to have Lloyd Avenue remain. It was something that Mr. Snyder would come up with to kind of act as a test case, right? PENDO just flat out said, we're removing it, getting rid of it, but giving people the option, you know, depending on where they're going from and coming to, I think is a good idea. But it's going to be a test case and it's going to be something that's going to be monitored, looked at for post-development study and then part of the PENDO project. But getting back to the roundabout. What was requested was that if PENDO determines that a roundabout should be placed at that intersection, assuming Lloyd Avenue remains, they wanted us to make sure that there's nothing physically precluding the ability for PENDO to put the roundabout in. So what we did was is at that intersection, we superimposed a roundabout at that intersection and made sure there was nothing there physically that would preclude the ability for PENDO to do it. So that's why you see. Roundabout, nothing physically stopped. What was requested of us not to put one in, not that it was more efficient, but to make sure that if that were an option in the future, that there was nothing stopping PENDO from doing.
I like the way that the, we have the opportunity to, if need be, to change it to a four-way stop sign because in both the PENDO review letter dated October 10th to be given the significant reduction in trips using the trip generation rates for mainline health in Newtown, tip generation rates from additional sites must be provided to verify a result. Did, did you get any of those other, the data from the other three? I think it calls for three other locations.
So this, yeah. So this is the comment talking about the trip generation, not necessarily the intersection. This is the comment that is suggesting that we provide additional information regarding the trip generation that we use the local trip generation. The other.
Have you done that? That's all?
Yes and no. So the information that we utilize for this site is similar information that we utilize in other sites for mainline health that PENDO has accepted. If you go further on into the letter, I don't know where that would be exactly. But if you go further on the letter, there is a.
It's, it's conservative based on historical accounts and that is consistent with previously provided data for N L H facilities, municipality, nearby municipalities.
Did you list out Chad's Ford and Newtown?
I believe it was.
I thought I read that in the.
It was Newtown.
All I have is Newtown.
It was Chad's Ford. But so if you go further.
Maybe they listed as Glenn Mills.
Right, Mark, if you go, yeah, Glenn Mills. If you go further in the letter, Mark, second class page, condition statements. PENDO is asking us to do exactly the same post-development study from the trip generation.
Exactly. Perfect. Yes.
They're requiring us to provide a condition statement that said we will post development study for generation similar to what Mr. Snyder requested.
My biggest concern. The crosswalk is being moved to the north side of Lloyd Avenue.
Yes, sir.
What is the distance from the arc of the curve on Lloyd heading south? No, down further. If you come the middle of that curve there, what's the distance from the middle of that sharp curve where you would see that intersection? What's the distance from there to where that crosswalk would be?
Um, I could not tell you off the top of my head, but I'm going to tell you that it's no different than the existing Geo Carlson intersection today. It's in the same location as Geo Carlson is today. So the visibility for people to see vehicles.
No, I'm talking about vehicles seeing an ADA pedestrian in the middle of the road crossing.
We can absolutely provide the information. I would tell you that, like I said, we're putting down north side, requesting the township. We had on the south sides, on the north side, requesting the township to continue that sidewalk, the north side Geo Carlson Boulevard. It will also be signed appropriately with high visibility signage and pavement markings to warn motorists that there's a crossing there, but it's essentially in the same location as Geo Carlson Boulevard today. So if someone was coming north on Lloyd Avenue.
No, I'm worried about south of Lloyd Avenue. I'm not, I'm not concerned about north on Lloyd Avenue.
I'm just, I'm just giving an example. So if you were, if you were heading north on Geo Carlson Boulevard and want to make a left, I'm sorry, on Lloyd Avenue, want to make a left on Geo Carlson Boulevard. Those vehicles coming around that curve have to be able to see that vehicle.
Yep.
Right? So to me, that says that there is visibility for those vehicles to see that or would there be significantly crushes that intersection?
Speed limit's 35, okay?
Yeah.
And I'll wait till Lindsay's done.
It's about 300 feet.
That's 300 feet. Okay. If there are pedestrians in the middle of that intersection and a car came around that corner at 40 and hit the pedestrian, what are the odds of the pedestrian survival? I can tell you exactly, one out of 10, nine out of 10 times, that's vision zero documents, nine out of 10 times pedestrian hit by a car doing 40 dies. Five out of 10 times a pedestrian hit by a car going 30 dies. So the sweet spot is in the middle there. So uh, do you want to have seven people die or? I'm asking you, I'm asking, and I think that everyone in this room can agree, this makes sense. Pedestrian activated, flashing light for that crosswalk. So that we don't end up with someone who can't move fast in the middle of that intersection when some kid comes flying around that curve like almost knocked me off the road the other night. Once that road is dedicated to us, it's not your company's responsibility. It's not mainlines. The health of those people are ours. So putting in pedestrian activated, flashing, someone's in the crosswalk makes perfect sense. It's the right thing to do, similar to what they have in Downingtown now on, in front of the new business, the borough there. It's only on if pedestrian activates it. And I know I would sleep a lot better at night. And I'm sure that the residents on Lloyd Avenue would sleep better knowing that they're not going to end up with a pedestrian dead on their lawn or a car up on their lawn. It's.
Can I ask a question, Mike? Do you need, do you need to meet warrants even if it's township road?
You do need to meet warrants. So the, the flat, the crossing flash would be somebody to any traffic signal where it's permitted by PENDO, a noted maintained by the township. But I, in the, in the same vein, we'll think PENDO would have an issue with an RFP.
Just trying to make sure we weren't creating a possibility of.
Excellent. I will say in some locations, the, the most complaints we get with the, our RFPs are directed, like people are flashing, we use a lot of acronyms of engineers. One of the complaints we get is when, when you have the near residential at night.
Yeah.
Um, it is strobe and bright. So we get a lot of complaints to the residents that live near them, that they complain about. Uh, that's not to say that I, I wouldn't say it's a ad location for an RFP flasher if it were to be a two-way stop. Now, I will say that your concern about site distance, that's one of the primary things we're going to look at as our day one, do we need a four-way stop here? And I think if it wasn't always stop coming down Lloyd, they have to come to a complete stop with stop sign anyway. So I don't know that you'd need the flasher at that point. It's more if you don't have it. So I, it's kind of a, if, if the board really wants to pursue the RFP, I'm going to wait to see if it's going to be a two-way or a four-way with my recommendations at this point.
That's great recommendation. It would be nice to have that wired in there that if it ever goes four-way, that that has to be put in. I mean, if it, if it stays, if it stays two-way, then it has to be.
I do think the RFPs are, you know, we've had success with them getting attention when you have some drive, it's only on when someone's going to cross. But we do get complaints when it closes residential. I won't, it just, eyes wide open going into it, you may get some of it.
And Mike, could you, could you impose a condition that they have to go and get that approval now and see if it goes with four-way or do you have to wait till it goes with four-way?
Well, the flasher wouldn't be there if it goes before. The flasher is only needed if it's a two-way. Cause if it's a four-way, they got to stop this hop sign anyway. So you really wouldn't need the flasher as much because the car is coming to a complete stop. We'll see the pedestrian, obviously, when they're stopped with the stop sign. It's a whole other issue of coming down and blowing the stop sign. There's really no way to plan for that.
The acronym?
R R F B. It's rapid rectangular flashing beacon.
I think most of the people who would be affected are in this room right now. Like I said, they'd probably rather have that go off every now and then. Don't have someone being carted off their lawn.
Well, no one wants that.
I don't know. I think I, I might not have any more questions. Can you believe that? Can you believe that?
I'm sure I was favorite. There was going to be another answer.
Oh, sad. This one. Oh.
Yeah, I, right. So getting back to the rapid flashing beacon, I, you know, obviously it's up to the board whether or not they want to, want to require it. It is something, as Mike mentioned, that needs to be prepared by PENDO because they're not as the authority of all traffic, you know, flashing traffic control devices in the common Pennsylvania.
They would try not be opposed to it, I think, is what Mike said. Let's highlight that part of it. So.
I don't know why I'd be opposed to it. I think we're trying to get the belt suspenders approach. I think what we've had, we have on the plan right now is safe and appropriate and is used at numerous locations. But obviously that's, that's something that the, the board can decide whether or not they feel appropriate. It is a pretty expensive option. Would say the cost of, of a flashing beacon in that area, you probably want to have it on a mast arm for visibility. It's somewhere in the range of $75,000.
Oh, it's a lot less than I thought it would be.
A lot, yes.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So I mean, that's, that I just, 75K for somebody's life is a pretty good swap.
I know, but we, we could go back and forth all night whether or not.
We're not going to.
I know.
But the board will discuss this. So don't worry about that. But my question here with the two-way and the four-way stop signs. Uh, I, I know folks that are coming up Lloyd. Uh, I guess in the morning, it, it just gets backed up really bad. So the, the two-way stop sign, is that the reasoning behind that? Just to keep the flow going through Lloyd?
It is because it's the, Lloyd has the heavier float traffic right now. Again, you know, this is all subject to change, depending on, you know, we're making projections of how we think traffic is going to split for travel. Once they have the two options.
Right.
But I would note that maybe now a lot of the vehicles that are coming out in the morning are making that run. We are proposing a right turn lane here. They'll let people to continue. They're the ones that are going to come up to this left, straighting it rest will come up here that want flooding that. So you're going to see less of a back likely.
Yes.
Give them that ability to have to make that turn.
With that good note, uh, just to throw another wrench, coming out of Geo Carlson, trying to make a left with the stop sign, what do, what do we expect from that?
So that's again.
I see some heads shaking. Yeah. Just picturing myself trying to drive out of that intersection. So.
So that was all, that was all part of the analysis that we looked at. Again, we're splitting traffic. So right now, everyone sees the amount of traffic that comes on Lloyd Avenue because that's their only option.
Right.
Right. But we're splitting that, right? The amount of traffic that's going to be coming down Lloyd Avenue in front of Geo Carlson Boulevard. Because they're going to now give the option to use the extension or to come down Lloyd. So we modeled that in the analysis. We have a separate left turn lane on Geo Carlson Extension. And we looked at it again versus stopping Lloyd versus a four-way stop. And we'll tell you that the worst option by far was stopping Lloyd Avenue. You do, you stop Lloyd Avenue, you have vehicles backing up, up Lloyd Avenue now. It doesn't get anywhere near the intersection with manner, but it does back the traffic up further. The other thing was too, is how we have to split, there are going to be some gaps created on Lloyd Avenue in that area for people to make those turns. But again, it's, it's a, you know, it's not an exact science. And I think that's the reasoning behind having those options to kind of see how it plays out and then determine if we make it a all-way stop. Or if there's any other slight adjustments necessary.
And the right turn lane coming up Lloyd in, into the new Geo Carlson Extension, uh, how much of a distance are you looking at for that? Or expecting? Because I, I would assume most folks are going to try to make that right lane.
Sure. Yeah. And it's based on analysis. Give me one second here. We have a 75 foot right turn lane.
What, what information is that based on?
Uh, that was based on the analysis that they queue. If you're coming out 75 feet, they can make a right turn. It was more as, if you ever come up to an intersection, you've seen like a channelized right turn, you have a lot of rights being made. It's almost going to act very similar to that. They're going to have the ability to come up, get over a little bit, make that right turn. Then people can still continue on their way.
Uh, 75 feet. How many cars can sit in that?
Three.
Only three?
Well, they're not going to be sitting in it.
Well, well.
They're going to blow up.
Right turn.
Yeah, there's three cars to fit there.
Okay. You think that's enough distance?
I do.
Of course you do.
No, like I said, it's, it's, it's a function of running the announcement and seeing what we think is needed.
Okay. Okay.
Forgot I did have one other thing. It's not about traffic, but well, sort of it is. Uh, I, I'd want to ensure that all construction equipment and vehicles during this process would enter and exit at Manor Rock Raymond and nothing on Lloyd. No construction traffic on Lloyd.
Right. I just wanted to talk with staff and consultants a little bit about that. I, I get what you're saying and I'm not necessarily disagreeing, but I'm a little bit concerned about the impact of that to safety on Manor Avenue. Now potentially we could limit, uh, when construction vehicles could come in there like a time of day and we do that sometimes. Now, when like the water companies don't work. So I just, uh, and again, you have time, but I'd like to make sure that we get a chance to give you, uh, maybe some of our recommendations where to limit that if, if that's what your choice is.
That's perfect, right?
We, what, what I drafted was applicants shall coordinate with the township and develop the construction plan for construction deliveries, equipment and contractors to minimize disruption to the traffic in the vicinity of the city. Cause we need to analyze and study, get recommendations from Mike, Greg, and public workers and everybody else. So.
Now Lloyd, uh, was torn up two years ago by some American, no, no, it wasn't even PA American Water, it was Aqua. And it finally got repaved. Uh, if, if ends up getting chewed up, can we get a condition in there that go repave the road from any construction vehicle damage?
Yeah, they, all's I can say is they would have to, based on our ordinances, like any damage based on the construction vehicles, app, absolutely, they would have to fix that. And any utility work, we would have to repair that based on our existing order.
I yield my time.
Matt, I have another question. The, uh, the PENDO letter that was sent out, their recommendations, have you responded to that or has mainline health responded to that?
No, we're in the process right now, revising plans to address those comments.
Okay.
Yep.
And then you'll wait for their response at that point.
Correct. It's a, it's a long process. Um, so we're going to revise our plans. We'll get them back into PENDO. We'll address each one of their comments. They'll review it, decide what's been addressed in terms of if there are any additional comments or what we haven't addressed to their satisfaction, give us a review. Revise the plans and get them back in. So it is a long process, uh, but we have begun the process.
Commissioners, the other comments?
Right. Thank you much.
We just got, today we received this Chester County Conservation District letter. And it has a number of things that have not been responded to yet, apparently. Um, anyone on our staff or Lindsay?
I was going to say, I received that too. That was, uh, we made a submission and it, our MPDS submission about a month ago. So that's their administrative review they start with. So we received that today. So we'll be addressing their comments. Um, and then once that's complete, they'll move to their technical. We've had numerous meetings with them prior to this.
Did you tell them about the bog turtles?
There are no bog turtles.
Yet to see a bog turtle.
Yeah, I want to write it under the test. So if I am, I was going to turn over to Mr. Hope to talk about the building and some of the architectural.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. We'll have public comment or questions after this.
Good evening, Scott from Stansac.
Evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Good to see you.
See you all again. Thank you. Um, just, we've got a couple of slides. Um, if you want to go before we're, thank you. Last time we were before you, I don't believe we had a final confirmation of what was planned for the building. So I'm just going to run through that and then we've got some elevations and perspectives to share. Um, so three-story building, uh, starting at the ground floor would be the main entrance. Um, and then the, a lot of the high cloud asset areas. So people coming in for lab services, uh, imaging services, urgent care, uh, cancer, uh, comprehensive cancer centers, um, treatment and infusion center and a pharmacy that supports the infusion. Second floor would be all exam space, uh, a number of different specialties and pregnant care physicians. And then the top floor, uh, being the surgery center, uh, Sunday surgery. So somebody could be coming in for a endoscopy or something like that or a procedure uh, and an operating, discharged the same day, uh, be some additional exam rooms upstairs primarily that would align with the, uh, with the surgery center uh, and physical therapy rehab. And, um, I think you're, you're familiar with the plan. Uh, we, we did try to break up the passing of a building, but trying to accent it to the size of the building, especially as we're facing Manor. Uh, the main entrance is on the south facing parking area. Now, next slide, you'll see some elevations. Uh, so this is the design where it's not today, uh, masonry on the ground floor, um, with a kind of a brownish color for, uh, for the stone or for the, uh, for the masonry. Uh, in the middle of the top left elevation, that's the side that's facing the, um, the parking area and the main entrance. So in the middle, the three-story direction, that's, that's where the, uh, the main entrance is. Uh, we did try to break up a little bit of the facade in different locations again, to try to create some interest and then break down the scale of the building. Uh, and if you, the next slide, you can see the perspective. So this would be the view. Um, if you're coming in on, uh, the Geo Carlson Extension closest to Manor, this would be right turn as you're coming in, uh, and you'd very clearly be able to see the entrance to the building. Um, we are looking at signage on a canopy, uh, as well as some tiny for, uh, mainline health that people get in the middle of, as you're seeing, staying in, in the zone where, uh, the ordinance is. Uh, the majority of the traffic, we think, return left or go straight and park and then walk in. But we did file for a drop off, uh, in case somebody needs assistance and it's a shorter distance.
That looks good. So that, that was it. That's a big show. Commissioners, comments? Yeah, breaking glass, breaking glass.
All right.
Thank you. Are we, listen? Anyone else?
No, I mean, I think I have input from you. I mean, open it up to public, they have comments, I think.
I'd love to open it up to the public comment. Uh, Mark, I, I know you had your hands, hand up earlier. So come on up. Okay.
We bring up this slide where you're actually showing that sidewalk.
Sidewalk. Okay.
Okay. It seems to be the sticking point to me. First, let me go back. Township has had for a long time, since I've been coming here, a passion for having sidewalks. Accept it. Seems like the only thing to stop us from out on the sidewalk, showing all of the, for Geo Carlson, out to Manor, back down the Rock drain, is you can't crush the street. At Manor and Geo Carlson. It's the only impediment to having that side. Why don't we just have a nice sign? I walked down Lloyd Avenue. I walked down to your street.
Yeah.
I know. It's not safe. The second time I was asked to do so, I was accused of doing so. Cause it's not safe to walk anywhere on Lloyd Avenue at all. And now we have the curb putting on this part, March point or falls down. I'm not sure who made it.
Now we're all in this together, Mark.
But if our impediment is a strong, if it doesn't work now, it's not to anybody across the street. Why are we allowing it to stop us from the main sidewalk besides our cost? Why are we allowing it to stop us from the main sidewalk, besides our cost? I understand they're non-profit. Non-profits are not exactly non-profits if we know how they work. Okay. Lots of people make a whole lot of money working at nonprofits. Non-profits accumulate a whole lot of money. So.
Are you talking about sidewalks?
Sidewalk, what are you talking about? You can cross at Geo Carlson and Manor. You can't cross at Lloyd and Manor.
Right.
Which where you, you can't by PennDOT standards.
Why? It's too dangerous.
So where are you saying that they can't cross?
The only thing that's stopping a resident from, from doing that is the sign, right?
No.
No, there's no sign.
No.
There's no sidewalk either, but there's no sign. And Matt?
There's a sign. There's signs there. You're correct. There's.
Oh, there is a sign too?
Restricting pedestrians from crossing.
Oh, okay.
To Mr. Owen's point, the reason the signs are there is because it's dangerous for pedestrians to cross there. So if you remove the signs.
So I'm saying this is that they have the right to make a right on the Manor Avenue. You can run a Florida avenue, never cross Lloyd Manor.
Yeah, if they, if they get that far, they're running across the.
They're doing that now.
Well.
And, and they may be, but we don't wanna encourage that.
Exactly.
You're not gonna discourage it either.
There will if we don't provide.
I think, I think he's confused too. I think he thinks that Mainline Health is asking for a waiver of putting the sidewalk in. They're not. They're willing to put the sidewalk in. They're.
Yeah, we're asking not to. We, we, we do not want our residents to walk all the way up there and say, okay, I'm gonna make a run for it and hope for the best. Yeah.
My time.
Let's move it. We have anyone else? Yes?
Brett. Uh, hey, Brett Kukin is what app. Um, so I just, because this is one of the conditions that you're gonna be deciding on next week, returning the, that tree cover on right side, or the, excuse me, the, the west side. Um, they're supposed to provide, understanding is based on the condition like a visual box. Could you, I heard that there'd be a mix of evergreen, like canopy trees and evergreen shrubs. Can you talk about what species you're actually planning to put in there? So the, like, just so the board has some sense of whether it will actually achieve its purpose?
A resin. Thank you, Brett.
So the majority will be like the typical evergreen tree, um, and shrub. And I could give you like dimensions if you wanted to.
Well, it's like you're kind of putting probably dead. When I'm trying to make sure is they, you know, put in trees and die, doesn't actually. But exactly like, they never be, doesn't really. Like.
All right. So we are, we're not, there are no invasive to be honest. We are complying with your code, so, um. So there's some red maple. Uh, that's one of the canopy trees. The Norway spruce Douglas fir are the evergreen trees. Um, and then there are a mixture of shrubs as well, um, along that stagger. So the, the evergreen trees ultimately will grow to fifty feet high, the shrubs ten to fifteen feet high. The, um, shade trees, about fifty feet high as well, which is why we stagger them. But those are seen with.
Can I ask a question? When your, when your office reviewed these plans, did somebody in your office with the appropriate skill set to look at the landscape, examine this?
Yes.
Okay. So I didn't know that to be, so they said that you do have somebody that's a landscape architect that looked at that. And Brett, we can give you the plans and we can take a look if you have that expertise as well. I'm sure the board would appreciate that.
I just, I have a question to add. I'm looking at, I'm sure someone else has a question. What is that little brown line at the bottom of the screen?
So that's just stone gravel. There's existing stone today. It's a path to the, the, um, the owner's property. So we're just maintaining access for them. Right.
A, a question, should, to Brett's point, should a lot of these die off? Is there a condition we can put in that, you know, in a certain period of time, if they don't establish that they must replant the?
I think it's in there for eighteen months.
Okay.
But I think, I take the decision that it's on the land, the plan was required as your, definitely required condition, condition of your approval.
Okay.
Go back and request.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it was changed to eighteen months. So if anything died.
Well, that's the maintenance bond, right? It's the eighteen months. Um, but I just like to Brett's point, like in two years, if they're all, if they're all dead, that the whole point of the buffer is useless then. But if it's in the conditional use and it's a requirement of the conditional use, then that, that saves that point.
We can add more language in motion though, Josh, to make it comfortable.
Classic trees. Uh, any other comments from, uh, the residents here? We have a hand raised in the back. Let's do the, Chris, is that you?
Captain Parr. Good evening. Uh, Chris Parr, five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue. Uh, my question to the board, what would be the negative putting around about at Lloyd and Geo Carlson? Picking out your house.
Can we ask our traffic consultant that?
I wouldn't say there's a negative to a roundabout. I actually like a roundabout for that intersection. There are just some unknowns. The biggest unknown is the fate of Lloyd Avenue. Uh, whether or not it's gonna remain in part or in whole north of there. So without a note until PennDOT decides, that really can dictate the design of that roundabout. So it'd be really difficult to implement now that, without that information. I, I think it's a project that we can have PennDOT do if Lloyd's gonna remain and if we think it's a good improvement. I think PennDOT is saving a lot of money by having this developer build the Geo Carlson extension, cause that's part of PennDOT's scope anyway. Yeah. So I, I think it's not so much that it's, it's not a good idea to do now. It's with that unknown of the fate of Lloyd, I think it's best left to PennDOT's project.
Can I ask you a question, Mike? Does it matter, your opinion on whether a roundabout is, is appropriate at that intersection? Does it matter what happens to the rest of the, of the owner's lot? Does that impact the decision in any way?
I'm sorry, Kristen.
The lot too, the wild meadow remaining land that we don't know what we'll be developed with.
It could. Uh, although I don't think it would impact it that much depending on what goes in. That, that's another unknown, but really, uh, whatever they implement is probably gonna come out and intersect Geo Carlson at some point further from that location. They would make some additional legs to this intersection. So I still think a roundabout would be good there. Uh, a single lane roundabout, the design of it is, it's not independent of volume. So even if that uh, development adds volume, the single lane roundabout is kind of a set design as far as how it looks. You know, it's not really a width or how many lanes it's gonna be a single lane roundabout. So I, I'm not as concerned about the development of, of lot two or whatever we're calling it, the second stage or second phase of this. I'm more concerned with north and what happens to Lloyd there.
So you, you couldn't design a roundabout that had four legs and just turn off one?
Uh, you could, but it wouldn't be the most efficient way to design it, I guess is one way to say it. Um, you, you'd wanna know what traffic you're having coming down and how far it goes, whether or not it's gonna be a three-legged roundabout or four-legged roundabout. It does change the design.
Okay.
And, and it would be, I guess it would be a little bit odd to have a roundabout remove a leg. I don't, I haven't really seen that taken down. But, uh, you know, without knowing what that, what's gonna happen with that fourth leg of Lloyd, it seems like part of PennDOT's thirty-five year project.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Appreciate you being here. Uh, it's good to hear from you. I know, really.
Good to be.
Yes, we're, one up to the mic? Oeagles.
I want a jacket like that one. That's great.
Um, basically, I wanted to.
I'm sorry, just state your name, just so we have it.
Okay, my name is Sean Holden.
Thanks, Sean.
I wanted to follow up on the roundabout question, just like further detail. Is there any way to get PennDOT to expedite their decision? Because it seems like that's like the main problem. You need the north, you need to know. And is there a way, like, it would benefit everybody involved if they make a decision in, in a timely fashion rather than pushing it out? Because you have to develop the roundabout. I'm also worried about how long does that construction take and like, since that's the only way out, where would you go if they're, if they're have to do the construction and how long would the construction take?
Uh, excellent questions. Matt is right behind you, waiting to answer.
Let me guess though, the answer. Let me guess what the answer is. No.
Why don't you start with how long it takes to get a meeting that was trying to get.
Right, right. So, so I will tell you as part of, uh, one of the comments in the PennDOT review, they did ask us to set up a meeting uh, with the traffic unit, the traffic units, the unit that reviews the HOP applications. Up with the project management unit, that's the unit that is working on the, the larger capital projects, the thirty bypass project, the township, the applicant team. Um, and that meeting has been set up for Monday, November tenth. We're gonna have a virtual meeting with PennDOT. We kinda, and, and the purpose of that meeting is really, you know, listen, we've been, we've been coordinating with PennDOT and project management units through this entire process. And that's one of the reasons why we have the Geo Carlson Boulevard Extension to wait and do. You know, we wanted to make sure that PennDOT was okay with that since that was part of all of their concepts. But, uh, we've been coordinating through the process, but we are having another meeting really to find out where they all in the process with the thirty bypass. You know, probably I wouldn't, I don't, I don't know exactly what they're going to say. I, I would say that the process is going to be a very long process. You know, they're looking to start the thirty bypass in stages with the first stage being the thirty and Route ten intersection and work their way east. So they're, they haven't even started construction at that intersection. So they're gonna have to work their way in segments all the way through to get to this point. So it's gonna be a number of years before we see a shovel on the ground. But with that said, obviously they, they determine what shelter they're gonna move forward with. We're hopefully find out a little bit more information on November seventh.
And just to add to that, I know, um, we've been waiting for any updates from PennDOT. There is sister to public and all. And we'll be posting information on the township website to share it out. There's a, a virtual meeting about the entire expansion project on the thirteenth of November and then in-person, um, on the seventeenth. So more information to come about that, but that's where they'll be presenting the three plans, concept plans that they're developing and then talk about the, the phase of that larger project.
I will not be at that.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Any other, uh, residents?
Yes.
Shellhards, one, two, Joseph Court. Um, where do you want your resident? Is it this?
Yes.
Do you want me to lift it up?
No, you can, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I, I appreciate you recognizing us because I just wanted to state again, between Beaver Run and Old Town Homes, my development, which consists of Joseph Carlson White and Beaver Run Grind, Magnolia, Elizabeth and the woods at Edges Hill, it's four hundred and sixty-one homes. Nine percent of those homes need to exit at Geo Carlson and Lloyd. So I appreciate you looking at our situation. Um, is there any chance at all that this will open with anything more than a two-way stop? Any chance?
What are you looking at? More of a four-way style? Four-way gives you a better chance to get out.
Right.
Yeah.
Because if it's free flowing up Lloyd, well, that's wonderful for them, but that's not for us. I mean, it backs up as it is without Mainline Health to fill it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You know, a bought.
Yeah, I think that, that was, uh, I, I, you might have missed it in, in all the back and forth here that the, um, the township will have the right to take it to four anytime we want.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I think Mike's saying that he wants to sort of examine when is it most appropriate to do that. And the way that decision, the way that the draft condition that the planning mission was worded is such, that's completely of a discretion, okay.
Just to clarify that, that, that doesn't have to be a long study process to analyze. If, if at any point we think it's always out, it's get always done. You know, I, I will, I wanna see how it, how it operates, what we think, have assumptions on how traffic is gonna last on the new cross extension, so it's going Lloyd and taking. And i- if more people stay and make that, Lloyd and continue the way they know, if there's concern with a stop sign there, how far it backs up into that curve. I don't think it's gonna be the case. I think it always stops, gonna work really well here to be fair, based on the analysis. I just let, like, was mentioned earlier, you can add stop signs, you can't take them away. So you're gonna look at one way, we always stop. Never gonna take an always stop out. Uh, we're gonna be looking at it, not even on day one, when the facility opens, when constructions are, when the roads open, when they start to build that. If we see anything that gives us that term of site distance or operation, the right to be always.
Thanks, Mike.
I mean, otherwise I just don't see how we'll get out. I mean, you guys probably have an idea what it's like now. You know, especially at particular times of the day, but it's not just at particular times of the day. We all know. Um, also, this is kind of off the call, but does anybody have an idea of what percentage occupancy when Mainline Health opens this facility? Like what percent occupancy will it be? Do we have any idea? You know, will be six percent, seven.
Oh, right, right off the bat, you mean?
Do we have any idea on that?
I think they spoke about.
Yeah, they spoke a little bit about that, that they wouldn't be fully occupied till, I think you said twenty thirty, one thirty-one.
What about like day one? Do you know where they started?
I don't know if they know. Do you guys have that information?
I think they're hosting a bocce game in the back.
Yeah.
Doug Williams up with Mainland Health. Um, we have projections on, uh, the number of patients that we would like to see come to the facility. But it's not a guarantee that we will have that. I suspect on day one it'll probably thirty percent, twenty, thirty percent. Uh, as the year ramps up, we hire new physicians. We probably get to fifty percent by the end of the year. And as we get more physicians, it, it's a gradual ramp up so that by, uh, twenty thirty-one, we should be up to a hundred percent. And that's a, those are conservative projections that we could just beat them, but. The chance that we.
Good start. Thank you, Doug.
And one last question, um, believe it or not, I'm almost done. I, it can't get a straight answer on this profit versus non. Did, did I understand correctly, there were two Mainline Health facilities that weren't for profit?
So, uh, my understanding, the way, and I, of course, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. There might be some facilities inside the building that are for profit. That Mainline Health itself is a non-for-profit entity. But some of the places they will be leasing out will be for-profit entities. So that, that's my understanding.
Yeah, it's like, it's like this township building, the town, this tax exempt, we don't pay tax, taxes, but we have, they have a cell tower. So the revenue they receive in the area in cell tower, they get taxed on. So similar idea, it can be a non-profit build, the, the building itself, the use of the building be not subject to tax, but if there are components within that are leased out to various profit or, or taxable entities, I should say, not
Right.
That can then be subject to real estate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. The building itself will not change their tax status then. That's what it's gonna be.
Not the building, it's using uses of properties.
Of, of.
Area of the buildings that are used for uses that are subject to the taxation will have to.
Right. Any idea like how much of the inside of that building?
I don't think they know that either.
Okay, yeah. I, I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Any other, uh, residents here? We've covered a lot of ground conversation. Do not see any other hands raised. But we have one standing up.
How are you, man?
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Anthony Minister, five Elizabeth Court. Um, still on the topic of Lloyd and Geo Carlson, that intersection. We've heard a lot of discussion about concern for safety. pedestrians, bicycles, and also motor vehicles. Actually, I'm sorry, your name, Mike, 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 yeah. Probably, I will always have a lot of questions about the traffic side of this. It seems like you're in tune. Maybe it could help me out here. With all the traffic flow in each direction from Manor down Lloyd to the Geo Carlson intersection and, and vice versa, like Floyd and then Geo Carlson each way. The specific turning times for, for each vehicle can be from each location? Just so we have, because I've heard no left turn coming down from Manor onto Geo Carlson. Is that still the case?
Or no left turn?
So if I'm.
If you're from Manor and left on the Geo, left turn lane and a left.
I'm talking about Lloyd coming from Manor on the way coming down. So we're approaching that intersection with Geo Carlson. I'm able to turn right into Beaver, Beaver Run. I could go straight, could I make a left?
Yeah.
And make a left up onto the new Geo Carlson to go down.
Onto the extension, yeah.
Oh, you can from there. Okay.
I just, we're not making any restrictions, no restrictions to.
Very good. So I think, cause there was a time where that was going to be restricted.
Now they're, you may, cause there's always been discussion with PennDOT that they may vacate a portion of Lloyd. So in which case, no one could come down Lloyd from Manor. That might be what.
I'll just.
Oh, I'm well aware, there actually have a couple of different versions of that, eventually, if that is the case.
It seems like just about all of their point, that section of Lloyd getting promoted. However, I think the fact that the extension going in now, it's gonna give Penn Dot the opportunity to look at how it works with those options there with both roads open. That may change their thinking on what it may not.
Sure.
This will be.
Oh, we'll, we'll definitely have to live with that open for five, five years. Okay. So I just want to understand the traffic flow impact. So coming out of Geo Carlson from like Beaver Run area.
Yeah.
That's us. Right now, it's a single stop sign, you could turn left and right. Now, when Geo Carlson extension is put in, you could also go straight.
Right, okay.
Now, coming on Lloyd up to the Geo Carlson Exchange there, from like say, the bridge.
Yeah.
They'll be able to turn left on, on Geo Carlson, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay. They could also go straight, and then they'll have a separate turning. Turn to right, okay. Now, with the new exchange coming down from Manor, Pop Raymond, right, coming down on your Geo Carlson Exchange. At the intersection of Lloyd, there's a stop sign. That's new. But the left-hand turning. Okay, and also right.
That's shared through.
Okay, so that right lane, they could turn right as well as go straight. Okay, there's a lot of options. So let's just take. If somebody's traveling down the Geo Carlson Extension from Manor, and they come to that area, the intersection of Lloyd and Geo Carlson, right? So let's just say they need to turn left. Okay, so with the stops. And what that is, is that we have concerns getting out of our neighborhoods, it's also we have to return to our residents. So there's gonna be probably a lot of use cases, be it now or later, that's a scenario. Because we've heard by adding this new exchange, which is required by Penn Dot, that that's gonna push a lot of traffic, or let's say, say more traffic than what it is now. But they'll have the situation where before they would flow, right, without any any stop, because it would have been coming down. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So let's take the situation where you have a vehicle that has to go down to say, near the Lloyd Avenue Bridge, right? So they'll be at that stop sign. Make a left. They also have vehicle next to that that could move right, and that's only if they made a mistake or coming out of this.
Yeah, they couldn't come out of main.
Yeah. For myself, if I was on that right-hand lane, I would be going straight. So if you take the situation where somebody's in that left-hand lane, and, you know, with traffic flow coming, they have traffic coming up, called north. Right, where newest vehicles, even if we talk about all these turns going on in the middle of the intersection, which everybody has to yield to. You take that left-hand turn, that's new. And if I'm, if I'm in that situation, I would have to look left, right, left, and also have to concern about street. But when I look right, I also have a vehicle next to me. Because now that stop sign has the old vehicle. Now, I've seen this typically coming out of shopping centers on commercial roads, but we're dealing with a resident area where we actually have now new commercial. We talked, I know you talked about sight, maybe when you initially get that way. I've heard the sight there, there's going to be obstruction of a vehicle as well as many other things there. The problem is that I'm also in that situation where the vehicle in the left-hand lane is obstructing my, my view of. And we can't cross over till we know left is over. Lloyd. Problem is that each vehicle will be treated. So we're concerned about just the traffic coming from our right and left, and also now straight. We also have pedestrians going, we have bicycles coming. Uh, it's gonna be what do you say, a cluster or awesome in the case, it's gonna be a I mean, pretty intense situation.
Are you concerned about coming out of Geo Carlson, or are you concerned?
I'm having big concern, like, I know Commissioner Evans, if he's coming down that roadway, the new roadway coming from Main Health. Majority of the time, he's gonna be in that left-hand turn.
To go back home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, I'm gonna be going straight. And we may be competing about getting out there. So a lot of times when you can't see, seeing there's a presence of other vehicles, he's seen her trying to get out of place. It's the situation is that it's going to be very, it's gonna be an aggressive driving.
Right.
It's gonna be for concern about safety.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Already have concerns here, you could talk about the traffic, you know, flow through, it's actually trying to get out of there. And even if you throw in the other situation where you want to do a four-way stop, then now we have a situation of side-by-side vehicles at Geo Carlson and Lloyd, right, and you stop. After sign. You'd have a stop coming down, like, it's not so much a four-way stop, it's an always stop, because you'll have six vehicles at one time at that intersection. So if I'm coming from.
With all that said, I, I know we have Matt right behind you there, maybe he has a.
Let me just finish one point. So if I'm coming out of Geo Carlson where it's existing, you know, I have to cross over always stops. I have to concerned about the vehicle coming up. Right? They no longer should have a flow, if they have a flow still, turning, the right turning lane, the new right turning lane, it flows through. It's gonna be very dangerous for me at that stop sign that I have to wait for the one part in that side-by-side to stop while the other one flows through.
And why don't we get Matt to chime in here real quick? Yeah, I appreciate it.
Sir, if they're not.
The lanes are stopped and jockeying. That happens when you've got two lanes coming. One is the sight distance there often, someone may have to wait sometimes for the bigger vehicle to go. It's how it was a long time, if you have a large SUV and you don't have that X U, they can see over you, can't see over them. So it takes a little more time, a little more care to get out. That's not an uncommon issue with the stop control in a things. The with the always stop, it's the concern you have is who's targeted, right? You have six lanes kind of coming up, and that's a common problem with multi-lane always stops. Luckily, with always stop, have the collision be extremely low, you can see each other, there's stop at the intersection, it's part of a driver frustration issue, I'd say. Make the issue with that, but, but these are not uncommon concerns for, for multi-lane stop controls.
I'm just concerned about this current configuration, be it trial and error. That would be, is that if there's a lot of problems that there's a big what do we do? We throw up another stop sign? Then there's six, fix up the intersection, it's kind of. One question here, is that this specific configuration for this intersection, is it done anywhere else in the county? In the township? Common config?
Two stop. Section.
This way is a two-way with side-by-side vehicles at one, at that, at that stop. From the commercial to, to residential area. I don't see the vehicles being able to get out there. There's a concern, there's always concern, there's a concern about the residents getting. And then you just think about all these situations here of left, you know, traffic coming from the left, coming from the right, and also now straight, figuring this out. It's gonna be clustered, nobody's gonna be moving. But even the solution for always other situation is that.
And Mike, Mike, I know, I know we keep going over and over.
Is this the right location?
Let's kind of speed this up.
All right, this is my last thing.
Thank you.
From Manor down past Main Line Health, is this the proper location just to exit quick? At the Geo Carlson. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to address everything that you mentioned, guys. I would say the understanding concerns, but a lot of what you said, I disagree. And saying that, is there a certain intersection that we could point to in the county? Very similar to this, that goes from residential to commercial that has a special lane stop control on the side. Say, I was looking at this numerous times, the analysis, and we didn't just assume traffic flow for the mainline health, we assumed the traffic flow that exists out there today. We assumed traffic flow associated with other developments in the area, we assumed additional growth in traffic and the mainline health traffic. We've got this, those conditions in the year twenty thirty-two, assuming mainline health was fully occupied. And on public grid, we assume some spread development occurring a lot too. We've tried to be as conservative as possible from our analysis. Tell you that, but the analysis or what we do, is everything perfect? Absolutely not. A lot of science, and it's part. But all the analysis is saying this configuration will traffic. But the residents experience today, and yes, this is a change, this big change, right? Field today, at T intersection, Geo Carlson Boulevard Avenue, we're introducing a new connector road through there. This connector road is something that was contemplated by the township for decades. This is something that, uh, no one was contemplating by the township, but is contemplated by Penn Dot. And by adding that, giving the residents options, you know, probably the option of using Lloyd Avenue, using Geo Carlson Boulevard, which change how traffic flows in this area. It's going to be different than what you've experienced for the last ten, twenty, thirty, I don't know how. From a safety perspective, we think it's safe. It's not a trial and error. Essentially, what we're looking at doing, not looking at changing geometry, we're looking at whether the two-way stop had four. The only reason we're not going with the four-way stop right now is because if the four-way stop is not needed and actually causes more issues, it's harder to take away or two, two legs than to introduce. But if on day one, we notice that there's problems, we're three hundred and sixty-five, then we will look at adding those additional stop signs. From a safety perspective, all I've heard through the last nine months from residents and safety concerns with pedestrians currently walking on Lloyd, children walking to the land over farms, bikes, things of that nature. We are significantly improving safety in that aspect. Adding a sidewalk system off the road that directs you immediately from that residential area all the way up to an intersection that accommodates pedestrian and will be obligated all the most advanced equipment available. So we're directing them to an intersection that allows for pedestrians and provides for pedestrians versus pedestrians coming up Lloyd Avenue, going to an intersection where they're currently being across there, taking, passing their lot, lives in their. Okay, now how about the vehicles? Because what is new is the vehicles. Oh, but Manor down. That is a new situation, that's where I'm concerned about. Eight. Because the township has already stated that that turn on Lloyd, it would call blind at some point. Right, so.
I don't think it's called a blind, well, that curve million times.
Yes, driven, but with traffic coming in and out, right, those, there's, it's new, it's a new situation. I just make sure everything's thoroughly all through.
But Mike, Mike, I know it's a new intersection, but it's well thought out. So.
It's timing of, I mean, I.
Okay, and it, yeah, this.
And I'm just gonna.
Okay, thank you so much, because we, we have a full agenda after this.
Yeah, the timing is, it turns that, it's the new traffic pattern coming down on that left-hand turning lane.
Okay, and I, I've seen these type of intersections throughout Chester County and everywhere else, so it, it's, it's a learning curve for folks.
Sure.
Whoever is ridden over by where Ship Road is, I mean, that was a whole new learning curve for everyone out there, so it, it's just all part of it, but we put a lot of thought into this as well as the traffic, so.
The answer is already set, okay?
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes. Just state your name for us.
Sure, absolutely, Jason Schmidt.
Jason, welcome.
Um, mine are just quick questions. Um, I noticed they got a waiver from depth of ponding. I just wanted to know with the actual, like, I know that the it's managed relief, so it's holding water. How long is it holding water? How deep is it if it's going, you know?
Waiver for what, eight, eight feet, five feet or something? Is that what you're talking about?
To that, and that, that was just a recommendation from the planning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, she'll be able to answer that, she addressed that at point.
Good to see you. Um, so you're referring to the waiver regarding the ponding depth, because that would it's number six right here. Right, so they, so we are requesting the waiver from the ponding depth, and you're right, they are MRCs, and they're referring to the the larger basins that are visually shown in, in green, more of the detention.
Yes.
Um, so they still need to be watered within the required seventy-two hours, yeah. Is that what your question was?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Wanted to know how long it's holding water, you know, for mosquitoes, you know, wrestling virus.
Good point, yes.
Another one is, they talk, I, I guess, for you, like, right? Yeah, um, the traffic study, sorry, I only had two days to go through this, and it's a couple pages. You have eleven percent entering from the west of Lancaster Avenue. Coming.
Yeah, he didn't prepare, he reviewed it, Matt prepared.
Now, they did it by the book, they said it's a science, and they split it into five and six percent with five percent coming down Lloyd Avenue. And the other six would go through downtown, then wrap back around, come up mountain, go in. They didn't do anything wrong. But logically, if you're not from here, or if you are from here, you would never go through downtown at seven o'clock in the morning to get to this building.
Yeah.
So essentially, if you add the six percent back in, it would add an extra seventy vehicles. The only reason I bring that up is I know people were talking about certain instances of traffic there, the seventy more vehicles. Like, they did follow, like, the science of it, they didn't, they didn't do anything wrong, but like, a worst case scenario of where people are gonna come down Lloyd and there's seventy more vehicles coming down there. Just a thought.
Uh, did you want?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that table actually includes how the traffic is getting to and leaving the facility. So all of that traffic eventually gets here or leaves from here, it's just a matter of which way it goes.
I'm saying the getting to followed where you split it, like, you were coming off Lloyd all the way to Lancaster. Yeah, you split it, there's eleven percent going to it.
Going towards Lancaster Avenue, right, going to Lancaster Avenue.
On your westbound.
Which, which one was?
I don't know, I only had two days, I, I could talk.
West, like, direction to and from, it's west. Via Lancaster Avenue. Direction to and from.
Okay.
So it's to and from.
Okay.
But we're saying that from to and from the west, seven percent of the people that get to this site are coming from the Lancaster Avenue area. They're from thirty. They're gonna come up Bantry Avenue, they're gonna come up Pennsylvania Avenue. Remember, maybe.
For what I saw, that there were some that were coming on west thirty here. Go straight.
No, that's not what that means. It just means direction via Lancaster, so it doesn't, that means if it's from the west, someone's coming at Lancaster and they make left on Lloyd, come up Lloyd.
And then, wanted to go along with that, was the one lane bridge studied on.
One lane bridge was not.
That's such a heaven. Total traffic going in that signal bridge.
Um, it's a signal bridge, I don't know what changes will be made there.
Well, I, I know the signal's not that great, and there's traffic down, so.
Cars. I thought the signal.
I asked.
It's the way it's timed, it's gonna do that, that's the way it's timed, it's giving a certain direction.
And that can be changed, right? That can be modified, right?
Right, exactly. Exactly, it needs an update right now, it used to kind of, it had a, an eye that could tell if there was somebody, if there was no one coming in. It like seems to have been fried probably during the Aqua work. But I assure you, I live right there, and my God, before that late, it was like horns and guns and.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, there was a level of service, uh, God, Steven, that was the level of service. All studied area, and intersections were satisfied, Penn Dot, level of service standards, with the exception of the intersection of Manor Avenue, Rock and Green. Even subject to the people on this.
Oh, that's the, that's the, that's the intersection of Lancaster Avenue.
Oh, so that'd be.
Right, that's, that's not.
But I'm guessing that. But I'm guessing that.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much, really.
Their hands raised, any other residents?
No. Oh.
Have some conversation about two or on a trafficway stop decision now. I go from two to four, someone's gonna die. Us talent. You have blinking lights, that's a four on an intersection.
Mm-hmm.
And within one month, someone's dead. Take the decision.
Alright, thanks, Josh.
Thank you, John.
Any other residents?
One, two, three.
We're here all night.
Close.
Alright.
Don't forget to tip your bartenders.
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone.
Really, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, so with Mainline Health, are, are we looking into November?
Yeah, November.
November.
Alright, you guys have a, the meeting with PennDOT on the tenth, and our meeting is on the thirteenth. I don't know if that's enough time. Brian, thank you so much. Alright, you guys have a great night. Anyone else wanna stick around? We have sheets coming up. Thank you so much, everyone.
It's freezing here, did she turn?
Yeah, Ross, you're not, you're not sticking around for sheets?
No, no, no.
I am too.
Alright. Thanks, Ross. Hey, Ray.
I thought that was.
Fifty-nine. Be well. Matt, thank you. Thank you so much.
It's cold.
Okay, alright. Coming down here. Lindsay, thank you. Take care. Alright. Alright, Don. Uh, four point two.
Hey, yes, we're still here. Thank you, commissioners.
We're gonna keep moving on here.
We do have a, a fairly lengthy agenda yet to go. Um, next up, we have a sketch plan proposal. Uh, this is uh for Sheets, uh, gas station convenience store at the intersection of Bonsville Road and Lincoln Highway. Uh, this is the former Rite Aid property.
Sir, thank you. Uh, Nate, it's from Walmart.
Nate, is it Nate?
Yes, uh, tell, just tell me if I'm not catching the microphone. Uh, with me tonight, Ryan Anthony from Sheets, uh, Steve McRady from Land Corps, project engineer, and Eric Kramer from TPD, our traffic engineer. And this is just a sketch. We were before the planning commission last month, to solicit some feedback. Uh, we are anticipating finding with conditional use and preliminary land development plan in the next few weeks. A fair, fair statement. Probably closer, probably closer a month, but we wanted to take the opportunity, come in, uh, solicit some feedback from the board of commissioners, uh, on the application, walk you through the sketch plan. Uh, there were two points, uh, that we're requesting specific feedback on related to conditional use criteria. Uh, within the conditional use criteria, um, for a gas station and convenience store, uh, talks about a canopy having a, a peaked roof. Um, Sheets proposed this, uh, it's, it's a flat angular roof with some architectural detailing. Uh, we provided renderings, I don't know if, uh, we could call those. I think it should say, uh, canopy renderings. I'm sorry, or, or we have those here.
I, I can, if you want, I.
This, this is the canopy detailing.
Would you be able to, just so the residents can see, maybe back up there?
I have this at home, I've seen this, but.
Yeah, we've kind of seen it, but, uh, oh, hey, we have a stand.
There you go. It's, we're tuning it up.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Finalize the application, we can provide lighting details and show that all the light is contained within the property and is contained on, under the canopy, um, but just curious if we would get some feedback, uh, from the board of commissioners on that specific point. And second, uh, within the ordinance, uh, being that we're in the Lincoln Highway overlay district, uh, requires that the building facade be brick, out front elevations, we do have brick, but it has a stone water table underneath, which is also tied into the, the masonry details, uh, on, on the canopy. They were hoping to solicit some feedback on whether or not that was acceptable, um, or would be problematic within Highway overlay district. Um, we're happy to walk through the, uh, the sketch plan, but are there any general questions for us, uh, before we do that?
On the, uh, architectural features, uh, as the, I guess, author of the the brick, brick, uh, I would not be in favor of changing that in any type. We did the same thing with Wawa, and they wanted different architectural features, and we said no.
So it is a, it is a brick facade, but I think it's probably two, two or three feet up from the ground is a, is a stone, you're saying, and so you want brick from. We, we do, so email.
And there, we got.
Is that a standard look at your other locations?
So.
Comments?
So, Commissioner Young, if it changes your earlier statement, or still.
He, he bleeds brick, so.
It tend to bleed the same.
For the building, um, it, it doesn't say anything in the ordinance about the piers along the canopy, but I don't know if that's probably. With, can I ask some question? Would it, would it be prep if the brick has to be, or the building has to be brick from grade, uh, to top? Um, is that the preference that the piers, uh, on the, the gas canopy, if you break as well?
Correct.
So we'll, let's see, let's see what we can do, we'll, uh, interact with.
Let's take a look at, I mean, I'm on the fence with that, only because it identifies you. But, uh, but Josh has been doing this a long time, so.
So we're, we're trying for a unified look all the way up and down. One of the biggest issues that people say they don't. Callan Township has three addresses. We have Coatsville, Downingtown, and Thorndale. And people don't know when they leave Downingtown, enter Thorndale, or leave Downingtown, enter Callan Township, or vice versa, and leave, uh, Coatsville and enter Callan Township. So what we're trying to do is by having a brick look all the way across, you would have this look that when you're in Callan Township, you have a continuous look of brick all the way up and down the highway. So that, that's what we're aiming for.
And that's part of why we're here tonight, we want to get exactly this feedback and make sure we do come for you with conditional use applications and eliminate whatever issues concerning we can.
Respect to Mr. Mullins' comment, which is correct, you know, that might be your identifying mark, but township's like, sounds like media. The, uh, companies come in have yielded to the look that makes the town look better.
Yeah, yeah, they, what I'm struggling with, I mean, in the center of town, I think the brick is important. I know the campus, which is on the outside of town, is still in Callan Township, but we allow them to modify just for their individuality, I guess, but since you're in the center of town, competing with Wawa across the street, I'd like to see the, the fight begin. But it's, so. So, but yeah, ta- take a look at what you can do with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Were you concerned about the, the slope of your roof line? Should I read that, or?
The ordinance, the ordinance says, uh, it would show the peaked, a peaked roof. So what, what we have is a, a sloped roof, uh, which doesn't have a, a defined angular peak. Um, just Mr. Stackhouse, if this is something that the, the board of commissioners, uh, can great relief from, or, uh, confirm that this would meet the intent of the ordinance, so that's we're hoping to flesh out before we, before we with conditional use, present a definitive, is, is this acceptable? Uh, and Ryan, what I talked through, I mean, this is something Sheets has put a lot of time and thought into me. Psychically pleasing and doesn't offend properties.
Yeah, I definitely want to, want to hear what you say. I, I just want to say for myself, I'm not comfortable making a, a position on anything until the planning commission thoroughly vets and asks their questions and works with our staff and comes back with a recommendation of some sort from their point. But that's just me, there's five people here.
We understand nothing is binding tonight, we're only a sketch, but I fully, fully understand.
Right, what's your take on this?
Yeah, I would just say that they, uh, Sheets and Mr. Fox asked me very early on, um, about a couple things, and one of the things your ordinance specifically says is that the canopy has to be peaked, however, the board of commissioners can um, uh, entertain alternative designs, so that, that's been part of the comment from the very beginning.
We, we meet the height of the ordinance, so in all other respects, it's compliant, it's just a question of whether this is acceptable to the board of commissioners of the design.
And this is a standard at all your other locations? How large are you? Are you nationwide? Seven? Okay. Okay.
I grew up, uh, I went to college in Western Pennsylvania, so I'm very familiar with your. Can we bring up the site plan? Abby, could you be able to do that? So I would just say, when you, when you're preparing a plan, uh, Wawa had a very, uh, nice design out front, that included the pillars and this, the fencing and the sign that says, welcome to, to, uh, Thorndale. Uh, I don't know if you had anything like that in your design plan.
Actually, Steve, do you mind walking through the site plan, starting, uh, with Mr. Young's questions about what we've done, uh, around the street frontage?
And it's gonna, it'll be brief.
Yeah.
This is a sketch plan, uh, Steve McRady, project manager with Land Corps. So as part of our site plan, he did include vegetation, buffering, uh, street trees along Lincoln Highway as well as Bonsville's, also buffering the rear of the property and the side of the property from the adjacent uses. Uh, so go to your specific question about tierers and fencing, we have that, it'll be about as part of the sketch plan, that's something that we are.
Um, I, I'll just tell you that the biggest issue I'm gonna have with this is the entrance and exits. These are very difficult roads to enter and exit, and especially that uh, one on Bonsville Road is gonna be incredibly difficult to enter and exit, trying to make multiple turns out there, so. I, I'm not gonna go into it tonight, because it's just a sketch plan, but that is gonna be a huge issue. Um, moving for your project to move forward.
And what I can tell you is we are cord, we are currently coordinating with PennDOT, if you look at those two access ways, so those are the existing access ways for the ratings. So specifically Bonsville Road is a right turn lane that's composed as well as improvements to that egress and ingress coming out of the facility, but also, I'll direct to you real quick.
And it, right in and sheets and, and just my opinion, the traffic volume is significantly different. You're gonna have a lot more people in and out of that, uh, place than right in ever did.
Even in the years before, I'm sorry, yeah, even in the years before COVID, that Rite Aid, there was like never anyone at the parking lot, there's no action there, but currently, any anywhere around, um, you know, midday, four or five o'clock, if you're on Bonsville Road, you are not making a left at that light for ten minutes minimum, and that's with no traffic coming out of the Rite Aid lot. But I'm gonna defer until later.
The traffic study will kind of.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. So as part of this application, as part of this process, there is traffic impact study, all of that will be to the township. Um, I was just highlighting the improvements that we are making to those existing accessways that are currently out servicing the advanced.
Correct.
Eric Kramer with TPD, I work with him, I'm.
Okay, you know.
Um, just real quick, um, the study was submitted on both PennDOT and the township, uh, like something that you I'm, uh, have reviewed it already once, so we have a preliminary list of comments that we're working. Um, both with the township and PennDOT, we are already also scheduled meeting with PennDOT. Um, that occurred this week to discuss both the signal as well as the access points. So there has been already coordination of like, what improvements need to be done to have, uh, the safest possible egress and ingress movements of the site.
So you're talking about putting a roundabout in?
No, no roundabouts for this one, sorry, not like Mainline.
That's the, that's the most sensible thing for that intersection.
We're gonna put a roundabout somewhere in the sketch, right? Roundabout to round.
Okay.
Good, good. I have anything else? I could, I could walk you through the site plan if you had any specific questions, number of pums, anything like that.
I'm trying to picture the canopies, and how, how would they, you know, they're on the front line on thirty here, are they so sloping down towards, uh, Lincoln Highway?
You said high side, the twenty-four.
Oh, okay. 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 And there's six of them?
Actually, I have some pictures of what the.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, it's one, it's one long roof line. For individual.
As you can see, it's one long roof.
Will that be the gas price at this location, 289?
For a very limited time. For two hours.
Yes.
Well, I can just get my, I can get into management. I get into previous coverage. That was. As, as a condition of the condition. Like I said, any feedback that you have on landscape or condition we use process or like highway prior to submitting our conditional use. Anything that we can work into the application as we're preparing it.
So just look over at your competitor.
Take picture.
Yeah, take pictures. Uh, that, that semi curved wall. Yeah. What I'm picturing, if you put one on your corner there, we can have snowball fights back and forth.
Have a shield.
I, I apologize. It's getting late and we're, we're tired.
No, that's perfectly fine. Just understand that if our application does come in, we have pictures of people throwing snowballs.
Sold me at that.
Your say MTO and your snowball say MT. I would say you're drawing across the street.
What does Wawa do? BTO, MTO and?
Oh, I'm not sure. I don't think Bawa has one.
No, they do, don't they? They made the order for you guys. What does Wawa have?
I don't think they have a slogan.
No, they don't.
Really?
No.
Yeah, they have Hoagie.
Just Hoagies.
Hoagie Fest.
I can tell you because I didn't read your sheets.
Yeah. Good answer.
Yeah, good answer.
So I would say, I mean, I've communicated, Nate, obviously you understand this. If you have commentary, suggestions, when you take a look at it and think about it, can't sleep at night. Please get back to me. I'm happy to convey, forge comments.
Okay. Can I reach out to the residents here? Cause uh, somebody would be excited about sheets and maybe not, but any residents, Brett? Okay.
But there's no, there's sidewalk there. There's no way to walk into this without going on. I'm saying.
Drive.
Yeah, driveway.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Brett, Brett, I can speak to that. So the building code will require a accessible path from the sidewalk to the building from each street.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I, we have some folks talking in the back there. Can we keep it down? Thank you.
So typically our process.
I, I do have one question. Are you using the present building or are you tearing that down and rebuilding? All right, I, we do have a resident. Come on up. State your name.
Mark Fox, 256 Doorbridge. I stated my objection at the last time these guys were here. I'm going to tell you right now. I personally don't care if there's five rows of handbrake. I don't care if nothing's sloped. What I care about is if you put this in that corner, it's lipstick on a pig. We have the Calantown gas, you have ninety gas, two one was, Turkey Hill. And if you go further, you have the oil farm. Tell me how we need more poops in this town. Just tell me how we need more poops.
You can hear it from me.
You can't tell me that we need more poops in this town.
You're not going to hear it from me.
It's lipstick on a pig.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Any other residents? John, you always have something good to say?
Josh wants to achieve his brick architecture. Highway as you. At Sadbury, achieve it that way. Achieve it. Architecture of the structure.
John? Comments? Great. Oh yeah, yeah. Well, uh, Kristen, we'll just send you some.
Yeah.
Thoughts afterwards. Does that sound? And then she can reach out to you. I know you guys are in the beginning stages.
I would just say without conditional use at the end of November, we'll be looking at the end of January, maybe even into February or holidays, things like that. So has to go to the planning question first. So.
Thank, thank you very much for having us.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for, uh, the patience, sticking through Mainline Health there. It's good to have a full room. All right, take care. Thank you.
They couldn't see.
Don, I thought you had left.
All right. Losing a few more. And thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
Hey, you know, you don't get free candy if you leave before this meeting's over. We're here till 11:00. At maximum.
Oh my gosh.
Can we, can we get our staff out of here? These poor guys, we should have let them go an hour ago.
We had talked about getting, uh, bringing the popcorn machine out for tonight.
All right, well, we can.
Yeah, it's true.
All right, uh, want to switch back to the meat and potatoes. All right, take care, Chris. Yeah.
Can we do the meat and ice cream?
All right, directors, report. We'll start with the fire company. Patrick.
All right. I think it's the time. I'll, I'll bring up the milestones next month.
Okay.
For everybody, uh, just to make this quick. Uh, so September was probably one of our business months that the almost 20 years that I can remember and it was a non-stormy month. Uh, so number of fire calls was eight seven.
Hey, Patrick, I, excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah, guys.
You guys.
Hey, excuse us.
Hello, hello. If you want to talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right. You can step outside and talk. That's, that's fine. Just kind of interrupts here. Thank you.
Uh, so yes, we, we pretty much did two months worth of calls in a month. And again, no thunderstorm, floods or anything to account for all that number. So busy, busy month. Uh, continuing to wrap up, uh, fire prevention stuff, uh, which I'm sure Ray will go into more. But other than that, any questions from my report?
No, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess I, I should be first to either left, uh, for the September. Uh, so you did receive an unfortunate email that, uh, uh, 2002 Lexington Rescue Pumper was officially placed permanently out of service.
Yes.
Um, just due to major safety concerns. But we're fortunate back in August that you agreed to purchase the demo to get us through. Unfortunately, we were hoping to get through the end of the year. And I think some people jinxed stuff. I'm not going to point fingers, but not there. But so, but yeah, so that's we're, uh, doing the best we can with what we got. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Right. You just knock it down just one or two. It's starting to get warm. I'm, I'm, I have a jacket.
Sorry, Commissioner Young.
All right. Derek.
That was another busy month for us. Um, combined with the trend upward. We're still maintaining the comfortable staffing level, uh, through a flexible and balanced, uh, schedule. Beyond emergency calls, crews, uh, have been remaining active and engaged in the community, supporting events like football games and other public gatherings. These events or these activities reflect our commitment to being present and dependable, not just in emergencies, but in every facet of life. I did want to share one thing with you. Uh, as you, uh, as we discussed earlier, one of the goals for this year was, uh, you know, community enrichment and, uh, community outreach. Recently, uh, I had a resident from the township reach out, uh, as they found themselves personally seeing of a pretty aggressive or traumatic event. They received the training at the May event here in the township, uh, that, that was put on. That was the, uh, the collaboration between County Township and Makepeace. She called up and said, you know, it was a full cycle, a full circle moment for her, very emotional, uh, but was very thankful for that. So uh, just wanted to share that with the commissioners that, you know, the impact of, you know, EMS and emergency services as a whole in this township that's going to pass the calls and has blood over into our community through community outreach with, with that, with race team, taxi team and everybody that's involved in emergency services. So that's one reason I can say I'm proud of Makepeace. And that's one reason I can say I'm proud that we're teamed up with County Township. So.
We are thankful. It's Inglewood Golf Course. Nicole. Yeah. Okay, okay. Make sure separate those two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're talking about not having a microphone.
Good evening.
Evening. Very good.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Um, yeah, September was awesome. We, uh, had our, uh, high school teams in full swing. We had our fall clinic with ended, which ended up with, uh, over 50 kids, I think, um, out there and, uh, first year greater Philadelphia was, was all over the course, uh, teaching underprivileged kids the game of golf. Uh, so September was, was really busy. Um, we ended with, we also had 2,700 golfers, which is a crazy number for September for us. Uh, we hit a hundred thousand dollars in revenue for the fifth straight month. Um, which is exciting for us as well. Um, huge increases over last year's September. Um, in September, we passed total revenue for 2024 year over year. We passed it in September. So next three months are kind of piling on top of, uh, year over year. And, um, we're in a big push for new members. Um, and it's going pretty well considering the conditions of the course. So, um, we're excited.
I thank you for including the year, year over year, um, revenue and, um, rounds increase number in here. It's beautiful to see 50% year over year in revenue from last year and 30% up in, uh, in rounds. That's, that's the sweet spot in there. So thank you.
Exciting and it's only going to get better.
Excellent.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Public Works. Oh. Oh. Sure.
Uh, Adam Thomas, we're planning commission in County Court. Uh, I was at my brother's house over the weekend and we had a bunch of friends over that we've known for many, many years. And he had wanted me to help you that he was there with his daughter within like the last week or two. For around, she did not have golf clubs, so they rented. And whoever was helping, like, okay, here's the deal. But he wanted to point it out that you stopped, came over and made so that you had the right sites, the right equipment. And he was greatly appreciative of that. And the fact that what out of your way to help somebody that was just, you know, sort of just played with those clubs. You wanted to make it more, a better experience for her. So you wanted that pointed out that, you know, this is one of the main reasons that while the golf course is getting better, that the service is more important because that's going to be bringing people back, including them fulfilling their mission. So great job. That's what we want to see here in town.
Thank you. It's my pleasure, of course, to help, especially the youth golfers, um, and especially the girl golfers. Um, but, uh, yeah, our staff, the staff we're building is, is fantastic. And I'm, uh, you know, they're all great. So we're excited.
Thanks, Nicole. Thanks, Adam, for bringing that up. Right now, Public Works, Johnny. See you guys.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Hi.
What we've been doing, uh, lately with Public Works and, um, our stormwater over at Thorndale Heights, uh, Abby and Jessica prepared a video for you guys to, uh, take a look at. Short video.
Yeah. Guys look like pros.
That's fantastic.
Very good.
I love it.
Is that new stormwater added or just replacement of the existing?
So, uh, some of it is new stormwater added. Up on Bungalow, we, uh, added, uh, one new stormwater inlet with pipe. But, uh, all that was existing, but it was just buried from years of not being taken care of.
Right.
So when me and Ross walked that area, identified, you know, the problem spots, just plowing over the years, seeing where the water lays up there on the road to get the water off the road, we, uh, put, uh, new drainage in. So we put, Public Works put 15 new inlets in, bicycle greets, safety with, uh, wheelchair, you know, what you see there, uh, with, uh, 285 feet of pipe we put up there. And that was all through our summer months going with our regular activities we have to do to maintain the township. So the guys worked hard and we got it done at a good time. So and what you see with the, uh, paper coming, they actually came in a little earlier than another township because we had our work done and that kind of they were done. So that was done working and the finished result. So it looks very good over there. We got a little bit of work to do. They have a little bit of work to do. 88 ramps over on Emeryville and Summit, but that should be done.
Thank you. Seriously, it's, it's beautiful.
And together well.
Yeah.
Right equipment, enough guys, we maintain what we had to do or will basis and.
And did that. Yeah.
Thanks, Johnny.
Questions?
What's for dinner?
And thank Abby and Jessica from.
Thank you.
Yes, very handy.
With building life and safety, do we have like six figures? With building life and safety, do we have like six figures we're gonna be looking at?
That's next most recent basically. I'll be real quick. Um, I just one thing, you know, again, back to, back to staffing. Uh, we've had to uh, within the last two or three weeks, we've had two unfortunate fires in the township in multi-family dwellings and two town uh, town home developments. And with having staff stations, uh, one time in the middle of the day, one time in the middle of the night. You know, our career staff responded immediately, uh, made an immediate aggressive attack on fire. And we're able to pull it to the uh, apartment or the, I'm sorry, the area of the origin uh, with nobody injured. Uh, obviously mutual aid partners and uh, the volunteer partners that we have were able to assist, but if it wasn't for those staff uh, units, the, the one fire that occurred the other night in the middle of the night would have definitely affected. So uh, the, the hard work the commissioners have done, finding the funding to continue to support that program has, you know, those unfortunate incidents are where that pays off. The other thing, just really because Chief Elias does it, I'm gonna do it. The uh, here's a certain milestone, so I'm not gonna let him show up anymore. So, um, Firefighter, Firefighter Greg Lewis, uh, eight years this month.
Oh wow, alright.
He was a legacy firefighter. He had been under Thorndale, uh, before we took over the program. Uh, and then Firefighter Cameron Fromm, he was the first bridge staff that we hired and he had one year.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so, so take that.
Wow.
And I didn't see any on your report.
That's the only reason Director Stackhouse pontificated. About that this evening.
We are trendsetter.
On the record.
Okay.
Trendsetter.
Alright, thanks Ray. Police Department, geez, what do we got?
We had no milestones. Uh, through the end of September, eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine service calls uh, compared to about eighty-five hundred last year. So that number's up a little over three hundred. It's been a long night. I, yeah, the only uh, the only thing I want to mention real quickly is last night, we, we investigated a traffic fatality um, on Olive at fifteenth. And it involved a dirt bike that struck the vehicle.
Oh.
And the operator of the dirt bike was sixteen years old. So first and foremost, our thoughts are with the family and the people who are involved. That area has probably been the most notorious area in the township. Olive in particular and several of those cross streets, fifteenth, nineteenth, seventeenth.
Seventeen.
It's come up at meetings before and, and we get regular complaints about dirt bikes on the road. I can tell you in my twenty-eight years with the state police, especially when I was a young trooper stationed at Avondale, the only two times that I successfully stopped motorcycle or a dirt bike, uh, when I pursued it, especially the high rate, the tragically, they both ended the same way that last night's incident ended, which is very difficult to catch. And sometimes despite our best efforts or traffic enforcement or directed patrols, you know, when we encounter a dirt bike like that or a motorcycle, especially when it doesn't have a license plate and something that we can't track through pen dot, we don't even bother to pursue it. Again, last night is a prime example of what happens when we do. Uh, and last night didn't involve a pursuit. The accident is still under investigation, so I, I really can't say anymore about it at this point, but I know, I know it's, it's come up in the past. It's gonna come up again in the future. It's a chronic problem. It's a nuisance for our residents. Um, but last night is a, a prime example of why we do not typically engage those vehicles in pursuit. That's all. Really mentioned about that. I don't have anything else unless the board has any questions.
Sorry. Our, your team had to go through the emotional process of that. But thank you.
Well, and then the photographer who shut up on scene, you know, put it out on social media and the family showed up. So I wasn't there, but I could tell you that Chief Taylor and anyone else from any of the responder agencies, it, it really was a difficult scene.
Um, I will be very, very, very short. Uh, September, which seems like a year ago now. Um, the main theme was Community Day, as everybody knows, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank everybody who made a last minute change. Um, it ended up amazing. So this was our biggest event. It was a fifteen thousand dollar event, um, which is pretty big for us. Um, all of that sponsored by the community and um, yeah, it was huge and I think everyone had a really nice time. So thank you and thank the uh, all of the first responders that came out and all of the other township staff that came and volunteered. It was, it was really great. So that's all.
Abby, you did an outstanding job just putting all that together.
And the day after.
And the day after, yes.
It was a long weekend.
Glad that worked out. You said pretty much all the vendors.
Almost everybody that was planning on coming came. It was, it was kind of a little miracle.
Yeah. Turned out to be even a better day.
Yep, for sure.
Fun time had by all. Alright, moving on. Finance department, uh, are you the finance department this evening? Nothing comes up? Excuse me, and then we can go to the checklist. Uh, any questions on the uh, check run?
No.
I entertain a motion to approve the check run fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven, fifty-four nine twenty-nine and a manual check of three twenty.
So moved.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor. Say aye. Checks have been approved, five zero. Knocked out this one. Jahako, Jahako bench purchase.
To circle back with the, the finance, uh, there was a request for it to participate virtually this evening. Unfortunately, and we still do not have that capability, but we're very hopeful and in the very near future. Uh, they will be in to install the new system and will be backed up and running, but it has taken a little longer uh, than we anticipated and do apologize about that, but hopefully in the future that will facilitate for individuals that are unable to be here in person, um, being able to participate.
Always fun to have everyone show up.
Sure is.
Thank you. Thank you commissioners. And I do have a couple of items remaining on the agenda and I'll be as brief as possible, but of course, if there are any questions, all. The uh, Jahako purchase, this, this came out of the historical commission. As you may recall, a significant portion of the historical commission's twenty twenty-five budget um, was for the Spackman picnic event, uh, which went very well. Um, one of the benefits of that event, one of the largest components of that event is the food purchase. Um, we did have a generous individual who's associated with the, the friends of Spackman Davis Farm uh, put up that money um, on behalf of the, of the, for the event that, which was budgeted for. So those funds were remaining in uh, twenty twenty-five budget. There was also a budgeted on a second event that was discussed at past meetings. Uh, based on some conflicts, it was determined not to have that event this year. Um, so there's, there's a bit of money remaining in the uh, in that budget. At the commission, it was discussed to allocate or some of the remaining funds to the purchase of benches from Jahako. Uh, the, the thought was we're, we're going through the task force with the park planning for that property. In all versions of that plan, there's, there's benches, picnic tables, trash, uh, waste receptacles, of which uh, Jahako can produce. Um, their cost presumably will go up in the future, but they have a warranty of, of fifty years. So they're not gonna go bad between now and when we get the park open. So the historical commission recommended allocating the remaining funds within their budget from twenty twenty-five that were not used for purchasing benches. They can store them in, for example, the barn or another one of the outstructures on the property. Till such time that that task force plan is done. And then Jahako has agreed to come out and install those benches and other facility uh, features at that time. Uh, total cost from the quote is for six, uh, six foot benches. Uh, one six foot, oh, that's a donated one. Uh, so seven total six foot benches, one of which is donated by Jahako. Two six foot picnic tables, one dual trash can recycling trash receptacle. And then of course, the anchors to secure the benches, twelve of those total. The cost um, for all that total is nine thousand, uh, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I thought it was eight thousand.
Jahako is donating
Oh, I'm sorry.
One thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, that's coming from Jahako. They're gonna donate a discount and donation.
Yeah. The total cost uh, out of the historical commission's budget would be eight thousand three hundred dollars. This, it, you know, the funding towards the historical commission, it was provided in a line item. Again, the situation changed with the donation. Hopefully that individual will be generous next year as well, but incredibly generous this year. The total cost for all the meals, um, and our factors associated with catering came up to around sixty dollars. That was This was open, um, really for discussion items, to see if there's any any concerns with the purchase of benches, picnic tables and trash receptacles uh, for the future park.
Commissioners?
It's a great idea.
Think it's very jing or something.
Yes, yeah.
Part of the benches too.
Do we know how many we're actually gonna need for the uh, It's a big, big property. Six of them and scatter them throughout.
Probably need more than what's being proposed here. Um, depending on where the trail networks and other parking lot features, uh, it, it, it's gonna, we will need some infrastructure up there, of course, in order to determine where the location is. And, and at the next task force meeting, I believe uh, we will have a preliminary concept plan for that, so we can get a better idea. But just based on other parks throughout the township, I'd say we need more than what's being purchased in this. Not sure exactly.
Definitely need one or two by the parking. Everybody. Waiting for that shuttle to show up. It's in the budget.
Yeah. That's what's trying to get ready for playing. You know, getting ahead of it. Before their, their prices are going up. Where they can be moved.
Uh, and I know they do different colors. Any thought in that, considering we're gonna have a natural land looking?
Yeah, the historical commission was leaning towards the uh, they call it gray, but it's, it's a very non intrusive color at all. That's with it. The picnic tables, I think we talked about doing a green top benches on. But yeah, that's the color we, uh, on the left that we would do for the benches. Oh my god. No, what's that?
A brick.
Only on the base.
So which one is the sunrise bench and which one's the sunset bench?
I love it.
I love that.
I love that.
Well, I, I'm not, that's late, geez.
Yeah.
So it's a discussion item, but I think we're all kind of in favor. So.
It's in budgeted. It's a deviation from the established line item. So I wanted to run it by the boards for just a little different, but
um, I would just be curious on colors at, at that point, what you guys would, cause I'm colorblind. I, I pick them out. You'll be able to see them from thirty. Thirty bypass.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Any thoughts from residents? Thanks, yeah. Uh, we're gonna put that on the uh, November?
It wouldn't necessarily need to be an action item unless the board would request that, because it is a budgeted, the, the budget was established. It's a deviation from the line item, which wasn't included. So we can put it on November. Uh, there's not a rush before January, but uh, it's up to the
Yeah, throw it on, yeah. And if you have some ideas on the colors, I would just interested in that. Detail, more detail, but yeah, and if you have that, you can spread this.
Everyone has one of these.
Oh, is it here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's left first. Thanks Don. The LSA.
Yes, thank you. This is uh, it's a local share account statewide application. We're submitting them to support the purchase of fifteen uh, secondary, second sets of fire equipment gear uh, for the, for staff at County Township Firefighters at the Thorn. For me, um, total cost for fifteen sets is ninety thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the grant application is due at the end of November, so we have some time. We're about, I think, thirty, forty percent done. We'll get that application in. Uh, but this is really a component of the application requires a resolution of the board supporting township submitting it. Uh, the, the resolution is before you in your packet and uh, if approved, we will make sure to get this in uh, by the November deadline. There is a no match requirement for this fund. Um, so if approved, the, the full cost will be covered through the grant.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna second and rate along with.
entertain a motion. So move. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes five zero. HR audit proposal.
Yes, uh, as we discussed in uh, past uh, workshop, uh, there was interest in bringing on uh, an expert in human relations uh, practices, municipal government. Uh, we received a, a proposal that would be in your packet regarding uh, to accomplish that. Uh, would take about twenty to forty hours of, of work in order to complete.
Mean almost as long as this meeting?
Most as long as the meeting. And would involve looking at our current uh, just the documents, our office, our policy manual for employees. Um, going through uh, the best practices in the industry and making some recommendations that then uh, we can incorporate moving forward. Um, if brought on, the individual would not necessarily be able to start right away. Would start going through our, our documents first and would anticipate, a component of that would be some interviews and discussions, things of that. And that would kick off some point in the new year. Um, happy to answer any questions. Uh, in advance, it is someone that's, that's uh, affiliated with the township in the past, uh, in similar types of hiring practices. This is just a component of of uh, her service and, and that she provides for municipal, municipalities around the area.
Well, steam ahead. And the torpedoes.
Present, it'd be great to work with her again, so.
Get her on the hook.
Any questions from commissioners? If not, entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Move. Second, did you catch that Denise? There, quick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes zero. Can't wait to see Roseanne again. Alright, uh, civil service commission, least conditioning hiring offer. Would I speak towards this real quick? Oh.
I received information from one of the members of the civil service commission today, who's uh, period in office expires at the end of December, uh, that for personal reasons, none of which have to do with his health. Uh, he is not able to continue into another term. So I talked to uh, right here this evening about the possibility of quote unquote promoting one of the So I talked to Ray here this evening about the possibility of quote unquote promoting one of the aldermen members to fill that vacancy and we shall work out that conversation with him. And also a lease applicant eligibility list that is about to expire. And also with a conversation with Ray, the same for the fire waiter applicant eligibility list as well. So there will be activities going on in the new year. The first Civil Service Commission, the new year is the first Monday of the month of January, but we will be scheduling that and having discussions about those and making some decisions at that point. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Board, any questions?
I'm up.
And so, entertain a motion authorized, chief, please to extend a conditional offer of employment to Angelo Manuel Torres.
So moved.
Moved. Moved in second, all in favor. Right along. Motion passes five zero. Good luck. Salt shed. Johnny, I know you've been dying to hear about this.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioners. This has been an agenda item that before I fur over to Director Huggins, and an item we've talked about for some time. As you know, we were looking at, the, the turn salt shed is in disrepair. It is a need to replacement. And we've been exploring various options. It's, we had a number of, one quote that came in from Steelworks earlier this year. They are a Co-Stars member. It was a little, little high, not compared to the Penn Dot contractor, which was about a double.
Yeah.
But still wanted to explore to see if there were any other options out there. We do have, through very hard work identifying and working through this process, we did receive an additional, additional quote for this work, came in well under the initial. Initial quote, however, the individual, the company was not a member of a, of Co-Stars. However, the opportunity to work with Callan Township, of course, can't be, you know, a great place to work. Therefore, my understanding is this, this company actually went through the Co-Stars process in order to become Co-Stars eligible. Is therefore available for the, for the work in the township. The total quote cost is two hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred and four dollars to, from bond construction. There is a memo in your, your packet from the finance director outlining where the funds would come from. This is, it would be a capital project. And it's, if the board would consider it, we have discussed this in numerous meetings, would be actually up for consideration this evening. Anything I'm leaving out?
No, just, um nothing leaving out is the guy who did our bathroom, Jason Vaughn. He's in the building tonight. If you had any questions?
Yeah, that twenty thousand dollar toilet.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I was like, really highly recommend him to take on the work because of the, you know, timeframe he did the bathroom and the professional that his staff showed and everything.
Mr. Huggins, you, you, you're, you're, you didn't give up on this.
Didn't give up.
Saved us fortune.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at those numbers and they're kind of like, so.
Yeah, no, this is fantastic and thank you.
For anyone that has patience to sit through this entire meeting. He deserves it, yeah.
Can we bring some of those benches in to lay down?
Very impressive diagram as well. No video.
Yes.
Yes. We did see the video of the bathroom.
Yes, we did.
Ah, boy. Oh, boy. Alright, Commissioners, any comments on this? I, I think, I think it was well worth waiting.
So moved.
I moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
I
Appreciate it.
Think there's something else maybe in the works too, for a smaller type shed side here.
Oh, the she shed?
We had, we had talked about potentially with some of the chairs in the back and some other storage items. I know we have the back.
Yes.
But potentially trying to see if there's, I checked with the chief and ready to see if we could somewhere, if we had the space outside to do a storage that's close enough to the meeting room, if we needed to bring things in, we could and clear up some space. It's still in the works though.
Utilize the room a little more instead of stacked chairs. Get some, some awards up.
I will say we have the lighting out in the driveway.
Oh, we do. It's ready.
Very good lighting out there, by the way. Alright, okay, now, now we turn down again. CCIU. Did we vote on that? Yeah, we did. Did we? Okay.
Yes.
I didn't write it down.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Yes. Okay. I, I didn't hear us vote.
I made the motion.
Did you get it?
Commissioner Evans made the motion and Commissioner
Thanks for catching that Denise. Okay.
So the last item, of course, for discussion this evening is the Chester County Intermediate Unit. In the interest of time, I'll, I'll defer to the chief and the director Stackhouse and of course, Minquist. I know they're very involved at that facility.
Really?
Thing and I believe the chief can go into it a little more, but we can obviously with the Sheriff's Department, sheriffs on, on, on site currently. They're in a different capacity this year and we've been, there's been some discussions on how, you know, to, to manage that. Since they are the, the lead law enforcement agency for a lot of these types of responses from a law enforcement perspective, not a little different from emergency management, emergency services side, but there is another law enforcement entity in the mix at that facility current. I don't know if we need to, if there's anything you'd like to.
Thank you. Don't bother with my presentation or don't bother using the microphone.
It's both.
So this is obviously a new program, including the, the intermediate unit and the Sheriff's Department. We knew at the beginning of the school year that we needed to give it some time. And so far, it seems to be working well. It's definitely cut back on the number of service calls that the police department receives. I mean, every now and then, we, we still get calls to assist them. Major investigations, child line investigations, we would be responsible for. And we get our fair share of those. They're still averaging between thirteen and eighteen calls a week there. So it's, it's cut down significantly on the drain on our resources. But I, I think for the fire department and for EMS, it's actually picked up or it's created kind of a new set of problems this year, especially with false alarms. And I'll, I'll let the, I'll let the director comment more on that. Thank you, Ray.
Uh, I would just say that and, and, you know, we've been having conversations with EMS and Derek's been starting to track those calls as well, because obviously they're affected. We did have a rash of malicious state funds at the beginning of this, not beginning of this year, about a month, almost a month ago now, like five in a row, five or six in a row. Obviously that creates, you know, a public hazard. Every time we turn our lights on and respond to a call, you know, there's a, there's a risk to both the firefighters and to the public when we respond in an emergency rate. We get there, the schools are dismissing, because they happened that dismissal a couple of times. All those buildings are dismissing at the same time. That puts the kids in jeopardy, the buses, the whole nine yards. So the R code has a malicious alarm ordinance. So I followed that. I actually issued a citation to CCIU for violating that ordinance. Have not heard back from that yet. So I'm not sure what that reaction could be. But I will tell you, there's two other facility, newer facilities for CCIU. One's built already and occupied in Avondale. And one is being built in East Whiteley currently. And I've been in communication with the fire marshals from both of those. They reached out to me. I didn't reach out to them. And they are, the one that's built, they're already having the same issue. The one that's being built are being pressured to do things that are in compliance with the code that obviously said no. So I guess there's some, you know, satisfaction that we're not alone. But now the three of us are starting to talk in CCIU is actually using our needs interchangeably. So maybe that will help in general and bring some light to the situation. So, you know, we're monitoring that. And we haven't had an alarm, a malicious full statement since I issued the citation. Now, maybe there's no fire alarm system, I don't know, but
Covered them all up.
Well, that's a joke. We're, you know, our fire marshals are in the buildings on a, on a fairly regular basis, you know, going inspection, so. But at least they're taking notice, but again, it is, it is, continues to be a drain and until we figure this out cooperatively or through enforcement measures, we'll continue to deal with.
Not necessarily at this point tracking our response.
I understand that the Veterans Hospital Police Department are also involved. And they get numerous calls because the kids are running up in the hills on the VA government property, so they're involved as well.
I think everybody running. Reaching out to state and seeing if we can get some other help.
Excuse me, chief, do you see a rash of burglies or deaths occurring with the what is that, the program, with the food program being eliminated? Oh, snap.
It hasn't really hit yet. It's, it hits on Saturday.
Yeah, I, I just was wondering, you know, with five or ten people show up in the market and everybody grabbing groceries, I mean, you know, how do you handle a situation like that? Sunday. I know. I was just wondering, because people are gonna
Need.
Just do anything.
Thank you for the update on CCIU. Moving on to, so speak to the microphone here, moving on to the minutes for October ninth approval. Any changes, corrections needed, if not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hold on, I have a correction.
Oh.
Oh, yes. So. One night, he has a correct.
Downingtown Library Capitol Building Request. Probably the thirty-fourth sentence that says Commissioner Evans explained that request came from the chair of the building committee, should be Commissioner Young.
Yeah.
Yep. I did notice that.
I wasn't here, so.
That's the only correction I have.
Alright. Denise, you have that? And with that correction?
So moved.
Moved second, all in favor?
Aye.
Want abstain, since I was not here. Acknowledge the receipt of ten minutes, oh, planning commission minutes for September sixteenth. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes have been acknowledged. Five zero, additional business. They left in the room, public comment.
Took a treat.
Same thing. Alright, entertain a motion. Who adjourned?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Happy Hal- Halloween, everyone.